Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. An agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov or, excuse me, I'll start over, www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council workshops are temporarily being held remotely and are accessible through GoToWebinar. These virtual workshops will continue through April and may be extended. This directive was issued on March 23rd by Governor Inslee and was clarified by the Governor's Proclamation Number 20-28 that made temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. This workshop is being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richmond, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. The workshop is also live via the GoToWebinar link on the agenda. And lastly, for those individuals listening in, they may submit their comments and/or questions via GoToWebinar, the city's Pasco Facebook page, or emailing the city manager directly. And with that, I just want to make one more addition that we are adhering to the guidelines of the CDC. There's only several people in this council room now that are literally more than 10 feet apart. We've disinfected the area and everybody, when not speaking, will have their masks on here in City Hall. So just wanted to make that clear so we can be good examples and have everybody do their part in keeping us safe. So I appreciate that. With that, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
And Serrano.
Present.
All seven are here.
All right, thank you and thank you, everybody, for showing up in your homes and being a part of this meeting tonight. With that, we'd like to rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. It's kind of a challenge with the delays to get it all good but thank you for honoring the flag in our country that way. We'll move right along to verbal reports from council members. Is there anybody out there that would like to share something with the city, with the council?
Mayor, this is Ruben.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Just want to note, we have quite a few, and I'm sure this is the case for most folks, that we do have quite a few appointments that we sit on and most of those have been canceled for me for this month and I canceled the Good Roads meeting as well. But we do have a state Good Roads meeting where I'll be giving updates about what's going on in Walla Walla, Benton and Franklin County from a transportation perspective that's coming up at a webinar. But most other things have been canceled.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Anybody else? The only thing I will announce is that we, we being myself, Mr. Zabel, Chief Gear, School Superintendent, had a public safety announcement that we put together. I hope everybody was able to see that and it appears that we're nearing close to 800 likes or views from our Facebook page of that announcement. So we're hoping that the information and the updates get out to our community. We're doing everything we can to update them and encourage them to continue in this fight and continue to stay compliant and then just be patient. And I know it's tough out there for a lot of people. I know a lot of people would like to get back to work but we got a little while to go and then let's just hold on and make it so that we can get through this. We will get through this and we're just hoping to encourage everybody to keep up the good work. So with that, we'll move right along to item five, items for discussion. We have meter reading services agreement. Mr. Worley, are you on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am here. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. The first item tonight is to talk about the meter reading services agreement. I think as most know, we hire Columbia Meter Reading Incorporated to help the city read the water meters throughout the city and their contract is expiring soon and so we wanted to be able to share some information with you and look at getting them into contract for another five years. Let me start with a little bit of background. The City of Pasco's been contracting with Columbia Meter Reading for the past 19 years and with that comes a lot of knowledge about our city and about the location of where all 21,000-plus meters are within the city and how often they get read. With the work that they've done over the last 19 years, their accuracy rate on being able to read all of those meters is very high as well, at 99.9%. The reason that I'm talking about this is because as part of our CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, you may recall that we had in there a project to change or install some new meters, water meters, that are automatically read. And I wanted to be able to describe to you that we are still wanting to move forward with that project but that project is going to take a little while to develop an implementation plan for how best to install all of those or new meters that are read automatically. And so until we're able to get that plan implemented and get that project going, we still need to have our meters read. Therefore, we're recommending that we continue to contract with Columbia Meter Reading so that they can keep doing the great service that they're doing while we move forward with the automated meter reading project. And so part of the implementation of that project is delayed because of the whole COVID-19 thing. We do need to phase it in. We have to figure out which parts of the city we want to do it in to make it easier. So the staff's recommendation is to continue with another contract with CMR or Columbia Meter Reading and keep this process going as we work through the automated meter project. So with that, I believe there's Richa and Stephanie online as well because if there are any really tough questions, they're going to be there to answer them for me.
So can we, Richa, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
So could you, do you have any insight as far as, I mean, this is part of what was in the budget. This is, you know, it appears that as we get up to date on the new system and then we'll be utilizing this contractor who's been very efficient here in the last several years, but this was all planned in our budget, correct?
That is correct. In fact, the budgeted amount is more than what is in the contract itself. So we feel very comfortable in terms of financial aspect of the contract but also the performance management of this contract as well. Our staff, especially customer service and customer service manager, Stephanie Brock is online right now, ready to answer any questions. She feels very comfortable with the service and so do I in terms of the service that Columbia Meter Reading Services has provided to the city in the last 19 years and we're confident that they would provide the same level of service in the next five years even as we transition into auto, more of the automatic meter reading service.
All right, perfect. Do any other council members have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Richa, and thank you, Steve, for that presentation. We're looking forward to, for this to move forward and get the new system up and going and again, thank the contractor for their services and it appears to be very successful. So thank you very much for that. We'll put that on the agenda for next week. Right, Mr. Zabel? Okay. All right, the next item for discussion tonight is discussing the speed limit ordinance on Chapel Hill Boulevard. So, Mr. Worley or is it Dave on this one?
No, that's, that's.
Steve's still in the show tonight, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, Chapel Hill Boulevard was constructed and opened at the end of last year. It basically connected Road 84 to Road 68 and as part of that project, we need to be able to determine what the best speed limit is to post on that road. Currently, there is no posted speed limit, which by Pasco Municipal Code means that the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. However, that's difficult to enforce given that we've got 35 mile an hour speed limits posted on either side of this new project. And so we are here tonight to share with council information about a speed study that was done by a traffic engineer looking at all of the different aspects of this roadway, how safe it is, what the crash history is, what the speeds are that people are going, the geometry of the roadway. All of these different issues go into a speed study and it's presented with the packet this evening and the recommendation for the posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour. And we would recommend that council revise the municipal code to add this section of Chapel Hill Boulevard to the municipal code and post it at 35 miles an hour. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Worley.
Council, any questions for Mr. Worley?
Mr. Worley, would there be any precedent for just changing the speed limit to our arterials like Burden, Sandifer, Chapel Hill, down to 30 miles per hour for safety reasons instead of doing 30, 35 miles per hour?
Generally, in situations like this, part of what the study does is take a look at what speeds the current traffic is traveling. And once those speeds are measured, they look at what's called the 85th percentile speed. What speed are 85% of the people who are measured? How fast are they traveling? And typically, traffic engineers look at being able to post the speed within 5 to 10 miles an hour of that 85th percentile speed. And so right now, the 85th percentile speeds is higher than 35 and to lower the speed down to 30 puts that recommended posted speed well beyond the 10 miles an hour of what the current traffic is traveling at. So typically, it's not recommended to go more than 10 miles per hour lower than the 85th percentile speed. It just, I think what it does is it creates driver frustration but I think the 35 mile an hours that's recommended is at the edge of lower than the 85th percentile speeds. I think what you'll see in the study that was presented is that the speeds are 40, I can't remember what they were, 43 or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, and so that's why I think they're, the traffic engineers look at all different factors and their recommendation is 35. If we go lower than that, it goes beyond that 5 to 10 miles lower than the 85th percentile.
Well, I guess from my practical and personal experience of 2018 and 2019 canvassing the whole city two years back to back and talking to a lot of people collectively, like 12,000 doors in those two years, the top two, of the top two was, I want traffic speeds in my neighborhood on my street to be slower because of kids walking to school, kids waiting at bus stops and just wanting to be able to be more accessible to pedestrians, to cyclists. And that's true not just here at this location on Chapel Hill because this is new, but Chapel Hill Boulevard to the west of this location from 84 to Road 100 with tri-si prep students walking to and from that neighborhood across the street as well as across the highway on Sandifer, on Burden. I've heard a lot of people tell me that that crosswalk across from the Geese Stadium is, you know, if you're coming out at right at the right time and you're headed west and it's sunset, you can't see, you know, who's walking or who's oncoming up ahead of you. And so the criticism I've also heard from the people who live in the neighborhood around Argen is that since Chihuahua has been built, they have seen a ton of traffic and it's just coming too fast. It's coming too fast for students when school's in session. We know we have a new school, elementary school right there on 84, 80, whatever the cross street is there, and 86. And then, you know, all those housing going in there too that, I mean, I would be, I would want it to be lower than 35 because we know people, when they see a 35 mile an hour speed limit, they go 40 miles an hour. Am I right, Chief Roskey?
Sorry about that. I had to hit the unmute button. Yeah, certainly people want to push those speed limits. One of the things that we'd want to make sure of is with the traffic engineer study is that we don't frustrate the public either. So when they do end up in those school zones or those residential areas where they are posted at 25, we want to make sure that we're not frustrating them either as they're getting off of these larger arterials. So, you know, I guess we could look at that a little further but certainly we err on the, on the traffic engineer study so that when we're enforcing those, we're not creating frustration either.
Yeah, this is just kind of like the main area which a city council person hears back and hears criticism from the public and the residents as to what could be approved and I would say that traffic is one of them and people speeding is one of them. So that's, those are my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zara. Any other comments or questions from other council members?
I have one. Go ahead, Pete.
Okay. North of that segment of road, that, my recollection is, most if not all that is zoned commercial, correct? We don't have a ton of residential going in north closer to the highway. Is that correct, either Mr. Worley or Mr. White?
I believe that is, I believe that's correct. The Road 76 kind of splits it and from Road 76 to 68 is commercial. And I think Road 76 to 84 is zoned commercial as well but I think it's designated for, or maybe it's not zoned commercial. I'm seeing Mr. White shake his head but I think it's high-density residential. But it was designed specifically not to have too many accesses onto Chapel Hill Boulevard. We specifically designed it so that there were specific roads that tied in but we didn't want too many other accesses on it so that we can maintain free flow and keep it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists as well.
Okay, I was just thinking, you know, I'm open to either 35 or 40 so I'd go the opposite route but if we have a lot of high-density residential, staying in the 35 zone seems to be the safer of the two options. Again, I'm open if the general member body of the council's looking more towards the 40, I'd be open to that as well.
Here's my take on going higher and that is that the higher the speed limit there in that area then the less encouraging it's going to be to be, have cyclists and pedestrians along that way because they're not going to feel comfortable next to cars, big trucks going that, that speed. I mean, the velocity and the size of a car increase like the ability for a person who is being hit by a car to actually recover. If it's going at a slower speed, you have better chances of surviving. So my, I'm just for the slower speed limit.
Okay.
Thank you. Was there someone else that had a comment?
This is Blanche.
Go ahead, Blanche.
I found it on Page 9. As Mr. Worley was saying, indicated the 85th percentile, there was a speed range there has been, according to the study, 39.7 to 43.8 miles an hour. I think I would go with the lower portion, the 35 being maximum speed in that area recommended, per the study.
Thank you, Blanche. And I would agree with, echo what Blanche said. You know, on Burden, I drive Burden quite frequently and 35, it seems to work fine. There's a lot of in and out entrances into store ways and it seems to be working well but definitely need to keep track of, you know, if it is unsafe, you know, we can definitely, you know, look into it again but I personally think 35, the recommended mile per hour there would be appropriate. But that's just my two cents. So anybody else have any comments?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Councilmember Alvarado, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question about the study. I did notice quite a bit of emphasis on the portion of the percentile of how it's currently being used. And I'm curious how much did the study take into consideration or if it's a practice in other places about land use but then also about how transitions happen from highway to arterial to street to residential, down to the 25 and how those adjacencies, you know, really like when you're driving on the highway, how, when people get off, you know, how quickly they are to shift from that 70 miles per hour or to 35? I'm curious if there's, if the studies take that into consideration. I didn't pick that up from the study but I could be wrong.
Yes, I would say that the study does look at that. They do take a look at the land uses. They look at how the roadway functions. You'll see that in the report where there's discussion about the classification of the roadway and in this case, it's recommended that the classification be a collector. They look at that based on how the road serves the community, how much traffic, how much access there is on it, whether it's a road that goes through the city from one side to the other, connects different parts of the city together. And so it does take a look at that. As far as how it ties in with the freeway speeds and all that, I don't think the study focuses on that. We do know that there are exits off of 182 at both Road 68 and Road 100 but as soon as those vehicles come off of the freeway, they're going onto streets that are not highway speeds but local road speeds, which are typically 30, 35, 40 miles an hour. And so the study didn't focus too much on that comparison between the freeway and Chapel Hill Boulevard but I think they did take a look at how the road gets used and thus the recommended classification for it.
Yeah, I see great advantage of having a lower speed on this road or the 35. I see a lot of potential there for families really enjoying kind of pedestrian activities there even though it's off of the, you know, in their own kind of off-street riding. I do sense that just slowing vehicles down on that road would really bring more pedestrians there. So just my two cents as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ruben.
Rick White, can you talk a little bit about the plan for the southern portion, south of Chapel Hill Boulevard and what is the plan that is going in, in that open land?
Well, it's, again, as Steve, as Mr. Worley mentioned, if you go west of 76, it's residential on the south side of Chapel Hill and it's single-family residential. As you are east of Road 76 on the south side of Chapel Hill, there's a mixture of commercial office and commercial zoning. So, and again, west of 76, south of Chapel Hill now is currently all platted. It's filling up rapidly and as a matter of fact, it may be full. I was just out there this evening. I noticed, you know, of course, I'm sure council has been out on that stretch of road now. There is a sidewalk and a separated asphalt bike path, let's call it. There were a number of families in that area. I also drove it this weekend when there was no traffic and my speed limit on the road was not above 40 just because of the way the road curves and because of the roundabouts and because of the proximity to 68 and the 76 collectors. But the land use is essentially commercial east of 76 and single-family and multi-family west of 76.
Will the bike paths and pathways exist on both sides of Chapel Hill Boulevard and be expansive enough for pedestrians and cyclists or people coming and going along that corridor there?
If you're asking me, my opinion is they already are adequate for pedestrians, bicyclists and what I witnessed recently this weekend and just this evening are, let's not say large groups of pedestrians but family-sized groups, three to four to six people. And I'm sure Mr. Worley has an opinion about that as well.
I think to answer the question, yes, there are facilities on both sides of Chapel Hill Boulevard in this area where we're looking at for the posting of the speed limit. It does have the bicycle path on it on one side and then a sidewalk on the other side. And the intent was that it be for exactly how Mr. White saw it. The idea was to bring families out and allow them opportunities to be able to enjoy utilizing that public right-of-way for walking and bicycling and making it safe. It's part of the Complete Streets Program that ordinance that council passed back in, I don't know, either 2018 or 2019.
Thank you, Mr. White and Mr. Worley. I guess one of the concerns that I haven't, you know, said out loud is kind of what Councilmember Alvarado was getting out with this question is that as people exit the highway to the south of Road 100 or Broadmore Boulevard and then use Chapel Hill Boulevard to dart through between, you know, maybe as like a go-around that they're coming off the highway, trying to avoid the Road 100, Sandifer, Road 68 kind of traffic and get through. And so they, they already go really fast on 40 miles plus on that part of Chapel Hill corridor between 86 and Road 100. And so that's my concern in setting that speed limit that it just encourages that same fast speed.
Yes, and that was noted in the study that the speeds on that section of roadway were, the 85th percentile speeds were fairly high and we are looking at that and one of the council goals was to look at neighborhood or traffic calming systems. And I think this would be a good area for us to focus on as things we can do to that section of Chapel Hill Boulevard to help slow those speeds down. So I think a neighborhood traffic calming effort in that section would be really helpful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments of Mr. Zabel?
I would just throw out to council to keep in mind
I, I would just throw out to, to council to keep in mind that this is a corridor that's pathway-developed. You have one side's developed, the north side is, uh, yet to develop. Yeah, a speed limit isn't forever. I mean, as the character is, uh, the character of that area changes, that's something the city should be doing over the years, is checking in, looking at those 85th percentile speeds and what the accident histories might be and, and what the experiences are out there. And just, it, it, it could be that that speed limit is appropriate to get lowered at, at a later date. Uh, right now, the 85th percentile speed is, Public Works Director mentions, uh, slightly above 40 miles per hour. Uh, we get it signed, people get used to the four-way or the, uh, the two roundabouts and some signing to slow people down in front of those. Uh, those are natural barriers, well, man-made, I guess, but barriers that will naturally just slow folks down anyway. And, uh, I think we'll find as that area develops, people will be driving at a slower speed and, and it may be appropriate to, to lower that speed limit at a future date and be able to, to, uh, uh, manage a lower 85th percentile speed, as, uh, Public Works Director alluded to. One of the things I wanted to share with council over the years, I, I've sat through a lot of these type of debates over speed limits on roads. Not very often, uh, a, um, uh, newly-developed road, it's usually where there's a problem, you know, rather than trying to avoid a problem, which is a little bit different twist on, on, uh, the conversation, so it was interesting to listen to. And, uh, I think very forward-thinking of council to be, even having that discussion, uh, rather than just taking the 85th percentile and, and, uh, moving forward. But, uh, I, I would throw out there that, uh, by state law, you have to have an engineering report to support a speed limit that you can enforce. So if you don't have an engineering report to back it up, it's very easy for someone to, that wants to look into the, what efforts the city made, uh, to set a speed limit and what they took into consideration. And if engineering wasn't the one of the things they took in, in, into consideration, a judge will toss out a speeding ticket in that area, so.
Alright, thank you. Okay, then we will put that on the agenda for next week. And those are the two items for discussion today. We'll move right on to miscellaneous council discussion. Mr. Zabel, do you want to?
I, I did have a few things if I could update council, uh, our COVID-19, uh, responses, uh, our updates are getting a little shorter because we're, we're kind of plateauing. Wrapped up, uh, had to wrap up very quick, quickly to the response, and, uh, uh, we've, uh, we've done those things. Uh, we have about 90 people working remotely in some fashion or another now, uh, whether that's part-time or full-time, uh, including, you can see some folks, uh, at home tonight, uh, on staff. And, uh, I was home about a day and a half last week, uh, overall, probably three half-days. And so, we're trying to do our best to minimize the amount of time around each other and in the building and, uh, still maintain productivity, uh, at a remote location. Uh, administering the new policies ratified by council, uh, we, uh, spent a lot of time this last week. Uh, the departments are preparing work plans around drastically reduced staffing numbers. We're hopeful that doesn't happen, but we need to plan for it, so we know what we're not going to do ahead of time, rather than trying to figure that out when maybe one day 50% of staff's able to make it in because they're not sick. So, I, I know we're seeing numbers get better, but I, I still think it's, uh, necessary for us to plan accordingly. Mayor mentioned, uh, one of the things that came out of our, uh, cooperator collaborator meeting last Friday was, uh, uh, the idea of a, uh, joint PSA, which we, uh, were able to pull off last week with, um, School Superintendent, uh, Michelle, uh, Wiltsy. And, uh, I think that went off well. That, uh, as Mayor said, we have some good feedback on that, and, uh, School District Report was, uh, excellent report. And then we have been able to coordinate on some things, uh, some contingency planning with Franklin County Administrator, as well as, uh, with Port of Pasco and Benton Franklin Transit on COVID-related matters. So, necessary and routine makes for a pretty short meeting. And there are some other things that are going on that have been in motion a long time I wanted to, uh, update council on, uh, as well. And, uh, so with the initial ramp-up, uh, behind us and deadlines, uh, having been met, uh, there's, there's room where we've made, we've made some pretty good progress on some of the longer-term efforts, uh, that this community is counting on being done for the future. And so, work on the comp plan continues on schedule. Uh, sign code analysis is underway, that's, that'll be coming to council, uh, in the not-too-distant future. Transportation plan efforts continue on. Uh, process water reuse, uh, phase one improvements are underway and moving along schedule. That's the irrigation pump system, uh, or station, uh, replacement and the foster wells, force main system replacement. Uh, those things are coming along on schedule, on budget. Uh, Station, uh, 81 and 82 remodels for the fire stations, uh, will be going to bid here very shortly, and they'll be used the first, uh, the city's first attempt at electronic bid process, uh, which also, because those stations are occupied, will be a, a virtual tour, uh, mandatory by the contractor, uh, to, to do that in order to be able to bid. So efforts on Station 83 continue at, uh, Sandifer and Road 74, that construction's moving forward. And then the permanent, uh, station, the replacement of the temporary station 84 at Court and Road 48 will be out to bid probably about the first of May. Uh, Peanuts Park Farmer's Market is being readied for bid, and that could be out, Zach, we're next week?
Oh, actually, we're thinking the bid advertisement will be by the end of this week.
End of this, okay, as early as the end of this week. Uh, very long-awaited project, uh, Lewis Street Overpass, not far behind. Uh, Public Works is awaiting a last easement from Burlington Northern Santa Fe. And, uh, right-of-way certification by WashDOT, a necessary process because of the funding source, uh, is nearly complete. Uh, they were able to go forward and, uh, uh, get it up to, or get it complete up to the point of the BNSF easement. And at that point, WashDOT can then obligate funds, and this project can go to bid. And we're hopeful that'll happen also sometime, uh, early to mid-May. Uh, these two projects, uh, I think tho, those two projects in particular have been discussed as economic and cultural catalysts for, for downtown for decades. And given the circumstances, uh, these two projects with the construction slated to start in, in, uh, late May or June, uh, they're going to be a real economic shot in the arm, uh, for all of Pasco at a time, I think, when we really need it. So, we're poised on, uh, using this time to ready our systems, uh, and, uh, this is, uh, obviously, Mayor, you mentioned it earlier tonight, it's a very difficult time for the city and our nation. And, uh, we certainly can't focus on what's in front of us. And, uh, and so, we're focused on that, but also, we can't lose sight of what's ahead of us. And, uh, so we're trying to, we're trying to move forward on those items as well and, and, uh, doing the best we can. And that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Anybody else have anything for miscellaneous discussion? Well, if not, uh, there, uh, item number seven is executive session, and we do not have a need for executive session. But before we adjourn, I would just like to, um, give two, two tips, uh, two, uh, advice for two different things that I want to encourage our public is to, you know, keep, keep fighting. Uh, we're in the third or fourth week of this, uh, social distancing and pandemic. You know, I've seen a couple, uh, and perhaps maybe the frustrations kicking in, uh, but stay strong. Uh, would like to, I would like to encourage you to keep planning your trips to the stores. Uh, if you could plan even for those, uh, who are maybe elderly, uh, assist them. Just take one, just one person, go to the store and get what you need and, and take the precautions necessary as you go into those stores. And, and also, one more thing is that, you know, it is encouraged or, or acceptable to go for walks, maybe use the walk path, go along the river. But as you do that, remember, just because you're outside doesn't mean you can be close together. Keep your distance, uh, as much as possible, especially from, uh, from those that are not in your household. Uh, so just want to keep encouraging you to keep those thoughts in mind and, and encourage others in a very, uh, nice way to, to do the same, so that we can continue this. Uh, we, we just don't want to get lazy here towards the end and perhaps get some more people sick and, and change that, that plateau that we're seeing. But things are happening, uh, uh, it's good news, they're going in the good directions, and I just want to keep encouraging the community to do that. So with that, uh, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting, and, uh, thank you, uh, everyone who's listening tonight. And, um, have a good week, and we'll, we'll keep updating you as much as possible. Thank you, this meeting is now adjourned.